All right, the date is September 4th, 2024. The time is 17:05 hours, and I would like to call the Frederick County School Board Work Session to order. We have an agenda before us. Do I have a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda before us.
Have a motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
It has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Can't speak. Madam Vice Chair, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following. Number one, to review and discuss the appointment of applicant A pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A dot one. And, number two, for consultation with legal counsel regarding public comment policies during board meetings pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A dot eight.
All right, we have a motion to go into closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion on the matter? Hearing, no discussion. Can I get a vote to signify those in favor by signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in closed session. Madam Vice Chair, what's the pleasure of the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we reconvene from closed session.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion to reconvene. It has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now back in open session.
And, Mr. Chair, I motion to certify the closed session. I move that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session, and only such public business matters were, as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the school.
Second.
Motion had been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by...
We'll share. You want to do a roll call for this?
Oh, roll. I'll let it Madam Clerk.
Dr. Erskine?
Aye.
Mr. Bunez?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Sturdivan?
Aye.
All right, then that motion does pass.
And, Mr. Chair, we have motions out of closed session as well. I'd like to move to approve the personnel actions regarding applicant A as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. Applicant A has been seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll on that, please.
Dr. Erskine?
Aye.
Mr. Bunez?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Sturdivan?
Aye.
That motion carries. All right, now I will hand it off to Dr. Herr.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. So I am very, very excited to present this information to you this evening in preparation for what we're calling a legislative summit, where we're going to be inviting our two delegates, local delegates, as well as our local state senator. We're currently working on a date. I know we're, have we heard back from one of the delegates?
I believe on October 2nd is the date.
Okay.
That I need to verify and confirm. I should be able to do that by tomorrow.
Okay. So what we're looking at doing is presenting to them some legislative priorities that we would like for them to take to the General Assembly to represent us, to do what's best for our students and our school division. I want to make this very, very clear, that this is a work session, and these are not set in stone. These were just items that I worked with my team on to present to you all, and if there are ones that you would like to see adjusted, or changed, or added, we want to be able to do that. This is a work session to have an open conversation, so there are going to be topics that we're going to talk about. I'll pause after each legislative priority, and then based on what information you all would like to see, that is what we will present when we have the legislative summit. It looks like October 2nd, and we'll work to make sure that date works for all of you, because that is hot off the press. Okay? So with that being said, for today, we are going to be presenting the whole format of why it's important that we are presenting this to our local delegates and senators, so they can represent us when they're going to the General Assembly, to make those changes, as I mentioned, to do what's best for the pathways and opportunities for our kids. Then we will have a conversation about which items you would like to see adjusted, or which items you would like to see added, or which ones you might have some more questions about. And then at the end, we will have a first reading conversation about 119P, and we will go from there in regards to those items. So as I mentioned to you all, having conversations with our local delegates is very, very important. We want to make sure that we are informing them of the challenges that we face on a day-to-day, as well as some of the items that we would like to see changed for the best interests of our students. And a lot of times, we might get concerns or questions from our constituents, from our staff, from you. We've had a lot of conversations, and sometimes we are bound by what the law says and what our state code says. So if there are some items that we would like to see changed, which I'm going to be sharing with you here in a second, we want to have that conversations with our legislators, so that they can take these items to the General Assembly, and they can make those changes and those adjustments. The other piece that I do want to mention is, when we had our last joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, there was a talk of them potentially being part of this discussion with us. We are going to invite them to this particular meeting, so that they can engage in these conversations as well, especially when we talk about the buildings and the different aspects of our CIP and CAP, because a lot of those dollars come from the locality, so there's probably going to want to be some, a joint conversation when we have, when we start talking about those items. So I want to make sure that you guys are aware, that they will also be invited to this meeting as well. So here are just some general items that we came up with in regards to what we're trying to do to improve the overall aspect of our students, of our school division, and just our overall makeup. So making sure that we have a safe and positive learning environment for our staff and for our students, making sure that we have appropriate funding for initiatives that come out. So for example, there, the new accreditation system was just published yesterday, and I'm going to share that with you guys in the weekly this week. So that's going to be an unfunded mandate. There's going to be additional things that are going to come out from that, and we want to make sure that we are getting the right funding from the state, so that we can continue to provide the necessary training for our staff, to add on the additional staff that we might need in order to make these things work, as well as the other additional things in regards to the operations that we're making sure that we are staying on top of and moving forward with in a unified manner. So those are going to be some other things that we definitely want to talk with them about, to make sure that we're moving forward in that direction. We also want to create positive partnerships with not only the many different constituents of this amazing community, but also with our legislators in the General Assembly, so that we can get a better understanding of some of the barriers or obstacles that they're working against, because just because they take some of these items with them to the General Assembly, doesn't necessarily mean they're going to pass. So we definitely want to make sure that we're talking through those things, and of the five or six things we mentioned to them, they might just take one, or they might not take any. And we need to make sure that we have those appropriate partnerships, so we know and we're providing them with the appropriate things to take with them to the next level, because there might be a rationale as to why they aren't currently a state code, or there might be a rationale as to why we're receiving certain funding, or certain aspects of what we need on a day-to-day. So we'll have to talk through those things, to make sure that we aren't setting them up for failure as well. Any questions about the purpose and the intent of what we're trying to do? So the proposed legislative priorities, and remember, these are just in draft form. This is based on conversations that I've had with my staff, items that I have seen in my journeys of here in Frederick County and previously, and some items that we would like to see changed, in order for us to operate in a more proficient manner, in order to get our students with what they need. The first is our famous COCA line. I'm going to provide you guys with some more information on that. I do have a document that outlines it a little bit more. If you would like to see that, I could share that with you guys.
Yes, please.
And I, so I will put that in the weekly this week, so I'll be more than happy to do that. Also, to eliminate the support position caps. So these were added on back in the recession in 2009 and 2010, and they have not adjusted that until this past summer. So those support position caps are still there, and they are still impacting the amount of funding that we allocate from the locality, because it's less that we're getting from the state. So I'm going to share with you a little bit about what that looks like, and I believe that our locality will also want to chime in on that as well, because if we were receiving additional dollars from the state, it would mean the additional, there would be less dollars we would be asking for the locality. So we're going to talk through that as well. Also about increasing post-secondary opportunities for our students. I have said this numerous times, I've had numerous conversations with teachers, administrators, students, parents, you all, in that we are all about creating opportunities for all of our students, and it's not about just going to college. It's about becoming contributing members of society, and about creating those pathways for our students, so when they graduate high school, they have developed a skill, and they're able to apply themselves in a productive manner. Maybe they become a HVAC worker, or maybe they become a school board member, or maybe they become a...
Goddammit.
Or maybe they become a police officer, or whatever it is they want to do, or maybe they do decide to go to college or the military. Whatever it is they want to do, we want to be able to provide them with those opportunities, and we want to give them those opportunities, because it's not always about going to college. Some students can't afford it, some students go, and let's face it, don't do anything with that degree, but some students do go to college and they're very successful. It's not about downgrading that, it's about providing all opportunities for kids. So we have some recommendations that we would like for the General Assembly to take into consideration. Out of all of these items, there might be some statutory-type requirements and some changes in regards to the code, so we'll have those recommendations for our delegates and senators to take into consideration. And of course, one of the biggest items that have been up for discussion, especially for us with all of our growth, is finding some additional revenue streams to not only take care of our current assets, but also to help fund our future assets, which is future buildings, future renovations, future expansions, because that has been a topic that we've all been discussing, and let's face it, a lot of those projects come from the locality. So that is something that we definitely want to talk through, to see if there's any way that the state can help us in regards to that, and we want to have that open conversation and dialogue. Okay? Yes, sir.
We could help ourselves, though, too, with regards to support for the building amenities, for our school buildings, as far as raising funds above and beyond what the Board of Supervisors does and does not do for us.
Correct, we could. But there's, but there's also conversations we can have with the state about, maybe there's other ways that they could fund it as well. So it's a two-way street. Yeah, absolutely.
And will we be talking about both of them during that period of time, or just the legislative areas that we are...
Just the legislative areas, yes. That would be a conversation during our CIP, CAP conversations with the locality.
That'll be our conversation tomorrow?
There we go. Sounds good. Any other questions? So what I would like to do is, I'm going to break each of these down. I'm going to stop at each of them to see if you have any questions or additions, and then at the end, I want to see if there's additional ones that you would like to see for us to research or bring forward for the legislators to take into consideration. I want to be able to have that conversation, and then we can be prepared to present that to them in a month. Okay? So the COCA line. So this COCA line is not a line that you can see on the road, it is an imaginary line that separates Northern Virginia from the rest of the state. And I've listed there the nine school divisions that are located in Northern Virginia, and this COCA line was created to help the workforce in these localities compete with Washington, DC. So before I explain this further, what issues do you think that this has created? So now who are we competing with?
Them.
All of these localities.
All of our surroundings.
All of these surroundings. Now, the other frustrating piece for school divisions such as us, is that line literally separates us from Loudoun County. So we are butt-up against that line, so we are very close to that line. So you can see the nine school divisions that receive the full COCA funding, you see the nine divisions that are on that borderline and receive 25% of those available dollars. Now to put that into perspective, we currently receive about 1.3-ish million dollars. What does Loudoun receive? Closer to 16, 17 million dollars. And the document that I'll share with you has that breakdown for you, and that document was created in 2016, 2017, so that number is going to change and adjust, of course, as inflation happens and as those dollars continue to rise. The other aspect to this, as I was saying earlier, and we presented this to you, thank to Mrs. Frakely and her team, for the staff that did leave to go to other school divisions, 31% of them went to Loudoun. So they are going and to earn more money in these localities, so we are experiencing what the whole intent of this COCA line was not to do, is we are being impacted by that, because now we are having to compete with these divisions, because teachers and staff are making more money by going to these localities. Now, we all know that this is the best place to be, and that is one of the things that we work really hard at, but that dollar pieces is significant, because people need to make a living, and people need to be able to make ends meet. So my proposal is that this COCA line be adjusted. The other aspect to this, and we do have the famous and amazing Mrs. Camery in the room here, is that we currently have what's called a calculation tool of how we receive our funding from the state. So we are one of very few states that use the Calc tool that's not student-based. So a lot of states use what's called a student-needs-driven funding tool, to make sure that localities receive funding and receive dollars based on the needs of their school division. So because we are not able to meet the needs based on what the state is giving us, where do all those dollars come from? And that is from the locality, because the state is not providing us the dollars to meet the needs of our students. And as we especially continue to grow, and as our student population that requires those needs continues to grow, we are going to have to find those dollars from somewhere, and this could be a possible way to do that, because this would be a bigger-picture change in order to change their calculation tool to be more student-needs-driven. So let me stop there. Of course, again, Mrs. Camery's here, if I missed anything there in regards to what this looks like, and keep in mind, this is just the, this is a work session, so we're going to be providing more specific information to our legislators. This was just to spark conversation, and to see what everybody thinks about this specific one, or if there's additional questions that you have.
Question. You said that Loudoun receives about 16 million?
About 13 to 16 million, yes, sir.
Do they all receive the same thing, or is it based on...
It's based on their student population.
Student population.
Correct. Mrs. Camery, is that...
And we're advocating for the full COCA as well?
I mean, I would, but I mean a portion of it.
Yes. Right now, we're getting 25%.
Correct.
And so we're looking to increase that by more than a few percent.
I mean, it would be nice if we were included in Northern Virginia. I mean, we are the most northern county in Virginia. We are.
Can you explain the difference between COCA and student needs? What's the difference there?
Sure. Great question. So the COCA is a separate pot of money that the state provides these localities, including us, because we get 25% of that, in order to compete with the job market in Washington, DC. That was the whole intent of creating that. So they have this separate pot of money that they give these school divisions. Top is they get full, we get 25%. The Calc tool is separate, but the Calc tool, how that currently is operating, only gives us dollars based on the number of students we have. So of the 14,000 students, we get dollars for just 14,000, but of those 14,000, some of them are English language learners, some of them are students with disabilities, some of them are economically disadvantaged, list goes on and on, and what most states do is they allocate dollars to school divisions to meet the needs of those kids.
They do like a pie graph as according to what kind of students are in the locality.
Correct. And there has been talk at the state for them to make those adjustments, which is separate from the COCA line, but it's part of the same conversation. Because why it's part of the same conversation is, is there's money, because these localities are getting it. It's about spreading that money out in order to get the rest of the state what they need.
And I'll, go ahead. Just to add on to, this, the COCA line just doesn't affect the school district. It affects police, fire, rescue, like if we are able to, if in Richmond, they're able to ship that COCA line to us, not only will we get a benefit from FC, for FCPS, but other departments within the county will also receive that benefit.
Kind of alleviate the burden on the county.
Correct. A great deal. Correct.
So this is almost like a funnel effect. They decided that those counties get the top, and it funnels down.
Correct. Yeah. That's exactly right. You got it.
It seems a bit antiquated in the sense that the single wealthiest county in the country, now above Orange County, California, that has the tax base to afford whatever they want, is getting 16 million dollars.
Yes.
Extra.
Yeah.
Wow.
So, I know, like, today's payday for me, right? When I see my paycheck, I'm not breaking it down by, like, the state took this much, the county took this much, you know, the federal government took this much, I just see that about 35% of my taxes, or my paycheck, just went to taxes. You know, so the taxpayer is going to end up seeing a tax increase if we petition the state for these. And would it help if we put in suggestions about how we get it, such as proffers? Like if we're getting built into, like, Loudoun County and all these, all these counties and localities that have the higher COCA funding, would it be beneficial if we said, well, since we're subbing out all our employees and workers to go work out in DC or Northern Virginia, and we have to compete with them, just like the way COCA was originally funded, or started, would it, would it be beneficial for us to make that suggestion to get it from proper dollars?
I don't know if the COCA, and I'm writing this down, because I need to do more research. I don't know if shifting the COCA line will directly cause a tax increase. I don't think that's how the pot of money, I don't think that's how it's divided up. I'm not sure.
I mean, the money has to come from somewhere, though.
But it's re, yeah, it's reshifted.
But if we're, if we're, if we all have a pie, right? And, you know, they're taking, we're only getting 25% of this pie, and they're getting more, and we're asking for more pie, where they're taking more pie from them.
It's going to be redistributed based on the money that's in that pot.
So...
So if, however much money is in there, if we move into that COCA line within it, then we would just be recalculated into those dollars.
Okay, so it's the same pie, just thinner slices?
That's based on how it's been explained to me, yes.
And so...
That would be up for, see, this, this is why this is great conversation, because this would be up for the legislators to be able to share exactly what that would look like, because they are familiar with that COCA line, because I've talked to them about it, and so, so that is something that they would be able to chime in on as well.
And would this then mean that the nine divisions that currently receive the full COCA would see less of it?
Correct.
Probably, yes.
Well, that is, so, well, that is why this conversation about the reconfiguring of that Calc tool is, and to Miles's point, the money has to come from somewhere, the money's there, it's about redistributing the money across the state to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the students. Now, that would be up to the legislators in the General Assembly about how they want to tax the citizen, but there is money there that just needs to get redistributed, and that's what most states have done. Now, there is a, there is a con to that, because then it looks like we're taking money from other localities because of their higher tax base, but that's where Virginia will have to decide how they want to handle that.
I don't represent those other county. I don't get that. Oh, yeah, I have no problem with it at all, I just...
It's going to be a fight.
I'm curious, too, and this is probably above our pay grade as school board members, but all of those other jurisdictions that are mentioned, like Clark, Culpeper, Falkir, Fredericksburg, Spotsy, Stafford, Warren, and of course Winchester, I mean, our delegates here cover, of course, Frederick, Winchester, and Clark. I'd be wondering if Culpeper and Falkir, and all the rest are lobbying for the same thing, because they're impacted the same way we are.
So I, so, well, I will tell you, because if you can see under the nine divisions who get 25%, in Stafford, we were lobbying for this as well.
Okay. Our numbers.
And just because everybody's lobbying, so say Warren County's lobbying for it as well, they might, they might not adjust the COCA line to them.
Potentially not.
They, they could include us, but not them.
And the argument, correct, and I would say, though, Miles, is that the reason that in Stafford, we advocated for that, is because it was very similar to Frederick, where we were right there on the border with Prince William County, like literally on the border, and we were losing staff to Prince William. I can't speak to these other jurisdictions, but if I was in Warren County, or even Winchester, I don't know if we're losing a lot of staff to Loudoun County and competing with them as much as we are because of our size. So I don't, I would argue that Culpeper, Clark, all them, they're probably not going to be fighting for this as much as we should be, because of our size and because of the amount of staff that we're losing.
Right.
This isn't just a fight, the COCA line, because these divisions are getting more money than us, it's we have the data to show that we're losing staff to these counties, and there's a pot of money that we can access to hopefully keep staff here.
And I'm sure our legislators have that data, but it would be beneficial if we try to present that to them, we have those charts and data to support our argument and our position on that. But I agree with you.
Yes, sir. Okay.
I think another thing that would be beneficial is, I, I know, I didn't realize this, I think the general public needs to understand how this is all set up, too.
Sure. Sure.
Because I think there'd be a lot of people who'd go, what? Wait.
Yeah. You're absolutely right. Absolutely right. I agree.
Well, while Clark is a small county, I know that they also suffer from the same thing that we do in Frederick, which is losing teachers and staff members to Loudoun, and also to Frederick. So they would also benefit, and I'm wondering if we reach out to them and see if they want to also advocate for this COCA line? If that's something that's...
Joined together.
Yeah, joined together, and sort of be more than just the Frederick County Board, but have another board that's involved with it as well.
So however you guys, however you guys want to do that, is up to you. The biggest piece with these legislative priorities are, these are your legislative priorities. These are recommendations. You guys don't have to vote on these. So adding that layer in there and complication...
Could muddy it.
It could muddy it. Now, is it good to reach out to the board and see, see how they feel about it? Maybe it might be on their agenda or not. I just think the more people you add to this, the more complicated it gets, but more than happy to do whatever the world of board would like to do.
No, 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 it was a question.
What pushback did you get, if you don't mind me asking? You said you advocated for this in Stafford as well. Is there, is there a common counterargument to this, or is there a reason that it's not been done already?
So it's a couple of reasons. The first reason is, is we would be pulling money away from other, other localities. I think that that's a big piece that is up for debate and discussion. The other debate and discussion is, is according to their numbers, which I haven't seen, it's just based on the formula they use, is they're saying that Washington, DC pulls more teachers away from them than they pull away from us.
I don't think so.
Which, again, I haven't seen those numbers, that's just based on what they've said. The other piece to this is, I mean, let's face it, this is going to be political, right? And when they, when they take this through the General Assembly, they are going to have to do what we all do, and pick and choose their battles, you know? So if this is something that is on the highlight of their list, then of course, they're going to push for it, but if it's not, because they're representing the other nine counties in that top nine, that potentially could, could pull them away. This is an issue, this is something that is in existence, this is something that has continuously been an issue, so until the General Assembly decides how they're going to reallocate dollars, it will continue to be an issue for us. So that, that's essentially the rationale why. I'm curious to hear, because I've never met with these specific delegates about this, I'm curious to hear what they're going to say about it.
It's very political.
Oh, yeah. It will be. Talking about money and reallocation of dollars, so absolutely. Yeah. Mr. Atkins, were you going to say something else? I want to make sure.
Nope.
Okay, thank you guys, anything else? And I will share the full Jay Lark document with you all in the weekly this week and just let me know if you have any questions on it after you guys see that. Okay, so the next one is, as I mentioned to you all, there was a cap that was put on support positions. Now, this is an issue for a couple of different reasons. The first reason is, as you can see, they finally made a minor adjustment in 2023, but they used to have a ratio at one twenty-sixth per a thousand students, that's what the ratio used to be. So during the recession, they reduced that to 21 per 1,000 students. So we went from 2009, 2010, when the recession hit, until 2023 with 21 per 1,000 students. Now, we still, as well as other localities, had to still operate with the amount of students that we had. So where did those dollars come from? Came from the locality. And as the years went on and as our population grew and as our needs grew, the number of staff grew and it went beyond what our needs are, it went beyond what they were saying our needs were because of how they cut that, that cap. So they then increased it to 24, which is still below the 26, but our needs still remain. So there still is a dollar figure that our locality provides because they are not providing that dollar figure. The other two area, which is our support positions, which we talked about this at two budget cycles ago, is we have a three to 1,000 ratio for psychologists, social workers, nurses, and other mental health professionals, and as we know, those are positions that are needed with, are within our school system, as well as counselors is one to 325. But per their ethics, it's one to 250 and we are very close to that one to 250, but for those additional positions that we have, above the one to 325, that comes from the locality.
Dr. Hammer, can you speak to this, like, slightly off topic, but goes to the point of you have requesting more psychologists basically on here? Can you expound upon what are psychologists doing in schools?
Absolutely, so there's a, multiple things that they do. The number one task that they have is they evaluate our students that require some sort of special service. So for students with disabilities, students with 504 plans, students that require some sort of service that they, they provide those, those evaluations, that's a majority of their time. The other piece is, when we have threat assessments, they are required to have a school psychologist to be a part of that particular process to determine if there truly is a threat or not because we need their expertise to work through that. They also provide services through the IEP plan or through a 504 plan, through some sort of counseling if a student requires that needed to access their education per their disability. Um, and then they also provide consultative services for staff in regards to working with different students with different needs, uh, and then providing services for, for students that, that might require that through a threatening situation.
So parents are always involved in everything that they do?
Absolutely.
So a student would not have contacted the school psychologist if the parents were not involved and did not know if that was happening?
Correct, but, but if there is an emergency situation.
Right.
And a student's hurt, and of course they're going to engage with that particular student.
Sure.
Um, if, if there's a student that says they're being harmed by their parents or if a student's saying that they're being threatened, that we have to engage per the law, and then yes, there's follow-up with parents, but that's, that's rare, but for, yes, the majority of the time, absolutely, those psychologists, there would be a contact with the parent.
Okay.
The, the psychologist can't do any sort of evaluation or a, a legit counseling service without permission from the parent.
Got it, next.
Absolutely.
So, excuse me, so what if I have, I'm a psychologist at the school and I have a young woman student comes in and says, she's pregnant, don't tell my parents, they're going to kill me. Not literally kill me, but, you know, how, how do we go about that? Like, do we still contact the parents? Because.
So, we, we've had students come into our office and say, I just failed my math test, my parents are going to kill me.
Right.
Right? So we navigate those conversations case by case. If a child comes to us and says that I am pregnant, don't tell my parents, well, I hate to tell you, young lady, but your parents are eventually going to know because you're going to be showing. So there is conversations that our counselors, psychologists, our administrators are trained in how to handle that situation. We don't keep information from our parents, we don't keep information from our families, we involve them every step of the way, but there's different ways that we navigate those conversations so that we can inform the parents and also work with the student through that situation.
So, just, I know this is a, a topic that's been hidden in school boards lately also, what if a, a child says, I identify as the opposite sex or something and, uh, you know, I want to be, I'm Miles, but I want to be dressed as Melissa.
Sure.
When I'm at school, um, do we talk to parents about that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Dr. Hammer, can I just clarify something?
Yes.
And, and tell me if I've got this wrong, the way that I always think of school psychologists when we work with them, they're diagnosticians, they're there to run batteries of diagnostic tests to help us figure out what kind of help kids need, whereas our counselors are working with those, those more intimate counseling conversations. We wouldn't send a kid to a school psychologist to have a conversation about, I failed my math test, my parents are going to kill me.
Right, right.
Right, and I, I should have clarified by saying mental health professionals in the school.
Yeah, so we have three mental health professionals in our school that are qualified to provide counseling services, a social worker, a counselor, and a school psychologist. Those three can provide those services. Uh, but you are correct, that typically they would come to an administrator, a teacher, or a counselor. Now, if they come to a teacher, the teacher is advised to hand it over to a mental health professional and they shouldn't be having these confidential conversations with students, they need to give it to the right professional to have those conversations, which we've advised our staff to do, so. Any other questions? Mr. Atkins, are you good?
Yeah, I don't have my glasses.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, so not only the, the funding aspect, but also the burden on our staff. I'm going to give you a prime example of where we were directly impacted by this, there's many examples, but the number one impact that I have heard is our custodians. So when we had the recession, we cut all of our high schools down to the same number of custodians and as those numbers continued to climb in those schools and we've added space at James Wood High School, those custodian numbers stayed the same. Now, due to our local staffing standards, we are adding more positions and we are going to be adding more custodians, we're going to be adding more staff that's in front of students, but where are those dollars coming from? It's from the locality because the state is only giving us 24 to 1,000. Now, when you look at our ratio, we are above that ratio, so we're in, we're in good shape, but the state should be giving us more dollars to fund those positions because that is what our needs are.
So is this part of the needs process?
Correct, absolutely, we should not be going above our needs.
And so what ratio is it that we're asking for?
So the ratio that we're, we're asking for is, so for the, the nurses and the social workers and counselors, I'm, I'm asking for a, um, a, a two, a, a three to 3,000, no, a four to 1,000, excuse me, to add more per 1,000 students.
So one additional.
So one additional, okay? For the, the staffing ratio, we went back and forth on that because the 26 to 1,000, I think that that ratio is antiquated. When you take a look at our ratio, we're closer to 40. I know we'll never get 40, but I think if we could potentially look at 30, I think that would be a fair number to look at, and this is conversations I'm going to be having with finance and AHR to, to really get a better idea of what that number's going to look like, but before we move forward with that, I wanted to make sure that you guys were good with us having that conversation. But any way that we could get that number adjusted to increase the amount of staff they give us and fund us for, the less that we'll be asking from the locality.
Sure.
And that savings gets passed on to the constituents?
Absolutely.
Yep.
And then the counselors would be one to 250, which is right where we're at.
Oh, okay. It doesn't, the savings doesn't get passed on.
Sure it does.
It'll be less money that we are asking for from the locality.
It's less money we're asking from the board of supervisors that they have to give to us.
But the state still picks it up and still money out of your paycheck.
But that, yes, in theory, they, it could, they could, in Richmond, they could vote to increase the tax rate, absolutely, okay? However, the way I foresee this, and this is just in Diana's humble opinion, is it's a reshifting of funding. So instead of the Virginia Department of Aviation getting this pot of money that they got last year, it'll be reduced to help fund these needs here, like splitting of the baby, if you will, based on what, how those delegates present their legislative priorities.
And I, I, I understand that, it's just, um, it's rare to ever see government organizations not funded, they're always increasing their budgets.
True, but at the same, that's one of those things.
I know it's not our wheelhouse, right.
Pay grade, I know, I know. And this, once we present this to Dolores and Bill and Timmy, like then they'll have to look at it and go, okay, Frederick County wants this, this other department wants this, this department wants this, and then they have to figure out what is going to be their priority. These may very well be at their top five, or it may be their bottom five, like we just don't know. Uh, the way I think of it is, we are doing, since we're representing this body, we are doing the best we can to.
With what we've got, I got.
With what we've got. And my focus is reducing the burden on Frederick County taxpayers themselves, if we can reduce those rates. The state is unfortunately out of our hands.
Agreed.
But we can help our board of supervisors reduce the burden on our locality, at least that's where my head is right now.
Yeah, me too. I, I don't disagree with you.
Run, run for delegate once Dolores or Bill retire, go for it, Miles, go for it.
Got nothing.
Could you give me a really good example of how this would lessen the burden on teachers?
So, for example, at our high schools where we don't have as many custodians, they ask them to please clean up their classrooms beyond what a, a just standard straightening up would be, so there's definitely more work there. Um, we have some, some administrative assistance where we might potentially need some more admin assistance in our buildings, where they are going to take on that role and responsibility, where it's going to take them away from lesson planning, tutoring, working with students because they're taking on those additional responsibilities. Now, there, there is an argument that some of our ratios are a little bit better in, in some schools than others, and I think that's where we need to have the staffing standards kind of level that field in regards to the number of students in, in each of our buildings. So for example, the custodians, we have eight across the board, so if we're able to increase them based on the size of the building, like James Wood High School, it will alleviate some of those responsibilities on our teachers and other staff. Does that help? Okay, anything else with that one? Okay. All right, as I mentioned to you all, another one that I'm, I'm very passionate about is creating additional opportunities for our students. And a lot of this comes from central office in regards to the work that Mrs. Post does, that Abby French does, as well as Mrs. Meyer supports that as well, in regards to creating these opportunities for students, and we have added on a lot over the last two years. We've added culinary arts, we've added an EMT through Winchester program, like we've added a lot and we're continuously adding more, we have the data sciences coming, but there is still a lot more opportunities to add for our students. Not necessarily the opportunities, but more seats and pathways for our kids. So one of the things that I am proposing that we do is that we a, ask the General Assembly to add in to their staffing standards, which would give us these additional positions so that we can have these work-based learning CTE coaches at the building level to help more individualized needs and create those more pathways for students. So this proposal is to add one work-based learning coach per high school to add on those pathways and opportunities for kids. I've consulted with, with Dr. Myers and her team, they are absolutely in support of this because they are stretched in across the division as they create these opportunities. So if we're able to add that to the SOQ, that's additional dollars that we will get because that is going to be something that I'm going to propose because I, that is something I believe we need, but if the state doesn't add it, that's additional dollars that we are asking from the locality. And that's something I know we want to be very conscientious about. Okay? Questions, Dr. Martin, you want to add anything there?
No, I think it would be wonderful for us to do that because we need, in essence, boots on the ground to really personalize that for every child.
She said she, that they need boots on the ground so they can personalize these opportunities for all of our students. Other side, make sure you speak up a little bit because the air is on, sorry, yeah.
That's basically it. In order to be able to not have this just a, a generalized program, we really need to know what the students' interests are, what they, their talents are, and we would need somebody that really could get to know the students and say, you know, you love welding, well, let's get you on a path that gives you opportunities not only in classes, but out in businesses and industry and intern with people out there. We, we don't have the current staff to be able to individualize life and we would love to be able to get more kids out doing these types of cooperative learning opportunities because we know that's how we get our kids honestly to come home eventually because they have a viable career path right here in our community.
Is there a test that, that kind of, they can take?
Like an aptitude test?
Uh, yeah, like an aptitude test in some sense, that, that kind of gives you all an idea?
There is, we have them at different stages as a student grows, where they get to talk about what their interests are and they're inventories that students take to learn, so we can learn about what are the things that they enjoy working on, are they?
And I want to be very clear about these positions, because that's a really good question. These positions aren't going to be teaching a class, these positions aren't going to be running groups, these positions are going to be connecting students to the community for the real-life application. So after we do these assessments and after we work with the counselors and the teachers about what direct, and the parents, most importantly, the parents, about what direction these kids want to go in, then we will provide them with real-life application. The other cool thing about this program is, we might have students that are going to college, but they need to develop skills, so we can provide them with work-based learning opportunities to apply their financial literacy skills, or how to manage and organize and make sure you get to work on time. And we can work and connect them with the community so they can get credits towards that, so that they're making themselves better citizens from when they do graduate college because we have a lot of individuals that do get jobs and we provide them access and they wind up doing something else, and that's fine, but they're applying those skills, they're developing those skills, and we're providing them with those connections and opportunities.
So, so how do you let them know about some of these skills and opportunities out there? Because I'm sure, uh, there, there are so many jobs out there that a lot of people, they, they know nothing about.
We have, if I may.
Please, please.
We, we have career coaches in each of our high schools who are actually employed by Laurel Ridge, and so they help in some capacity with that, but their role is different from what Dr. Hammer is talking about. The work-based learning coach, pathway coach at the high school level would be that direct link for the students and their interest and business and industry in our area. So we don't have the staff to be able to do that at this point, and we have businesses coming to us all the time saying, you know, we need internships, we need students to fill these roles, and, and the, the workforce, I mean, the jobs are there, we just need to prepare our school students to have the skills.
And Ms. Martin, correct me if I'm not encapsulating what you asked, I, I think, I think what Ms. Martin was asking for, and I'm curious as well, is how do you all in your department disseminate that information to students so that they can have that aha moment of, oh gosh, I didn't know I could go intern at Trex to learn about chemical engineering, like, or whatever it may be? Like, how do you all get that information to the students?
So the current staff, those current division, yeah, thank you, the current division level staff, what they do is they're in classrooms as best as we can, meeting with students, talking in front of classrooms, talking to counselors, getting the word out, that is a lot of what Abby French, who's our career pathways coach, and Emily Roy, who is our work-based learning coordinator here at the division level, that's much of what they're doing. They're also out with businesses and industry and they take students out, you know, to visit and to learn. And, you know, we have a strong partnership with Navy Federal and Trex and American Woodmark, and so they are networking that all the time and making connections for students. Our teachers are invaluable in that as well, they're the ones, it's a constant conversation back and forth as to, I found out about this opportunity, let's make this happen for this child. Uh, there's just not enough of us right now to do that for every child. We don't want the kids falling through the cracks because they didn't speak up and say, I have an interest here or there.
I need to, to illustrate, last year at the airport, we had a career day at the airport, and it was numerous, it was, so the airport is funded by five different municipalities, Frederick County and Winchester and Shenandoah Warren and so forth, anyway, we, we're included in that. And I believe, I don't know how they got the word out, but they did, we had a very great, very good representation of Frederick County students there at that event. So, to Ms. Martin's point, I think it's a lot of the teachers keeping their ear to the ground, it's a lot of the counselors, it's just a lot of having the bandwidth to listen to what the students want and listen to what their interests are.
Yep.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Exactly, and, and the team here at the division level, uh, the three of them, they're integral to that networking, so it probably came to them or they, they meet on a regular basis with area businesses and we have a good partnership, um, with the airport, and so it was probably something that came to them and they disseminated out to the schools and then the conversation organization takes place from there.
So you also probably need extra help, let's say, to liaison, different companies and opportunities out there to help with this whole situation because a lot of times young people have no idea what they want to do.
Right.
And, and they might see somebody shoeing a horse and go, I think I like that.
Yes.
True.
And we want to make that happen for them.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
So adding one of these, uh, work-based learning coaches per school is not really going to cover, you know, the entire student body, they're still going to be not able to accommodate every single student because of the number of students that we have, so I'm wondering what it is, what would the number of work-based learning coaches be, in your opinion, to accommodate all of our students?
I don't know that I can answer that without having the, the data in front of me, I'd need to look at interest surveys, I'd need to look at.
See how.
Yeah, I mean.
Because if this is something that we, we, we push for, you know, we should also know what our end game is as far as how many we actually want.
So, so for, for me, that's a great question, Mr. Ballin, and for me, these pathways and opportunities isn't going to fall on these work-based learning coordinators. There are other folks in the building that are going to be helping out with the different stages and aspects of these next steps.
Yeah.
You have counselors, you have teachers, you have these other coaches that Laurel Ridge provides us, you have the parents, so there's going to be a multitude of pieces to this pie of, of post-secondary opportunities. This is just going to be one person that's going to help make the connections with the community.
I get it.
And, and I don't believe we're going to need more than one. Would I take? Would I take more than one? Absolutely. But I also want to make sure that we're being good stewards of these requests, and not saying, give us four, you know, of course we'll make four.
Well, no, I'm just saying in the future, we could ask for more if we, if we found the need or the, yeah, well, the need-
And even if we decide to add more, and the state adds more, we can get one from the locality and one from the state, and that gives us two. You know, that's something to look at as well. But I don't know if you agree or disagree with that, but that's-
I completely agree. It's, it's like the spoke on the wheel. We have a work-based learning coordinator here, Emily Roy, who's fantastic. If she had that network, then we could be very efficient, and, and as I've said, you know, before, personalizing it, we, we really could get down to the level that right now that, you know, we, we struggle to, to be really honest. They do a fantastic job, it's just a matter of, we want to take it to the next level.
And a question.
When I was in high school, I had a chemistry teacher that tried to get me to move on to chemistry, and I thought he was nuts. But the things that I've gone through, I have a doctorate in naturopathy, okay? But the things that I've gone through, through my life now, instead of going to the college that I attended, I would have become a biochemist. So this makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah. Yep. It's all about making those individualized decisions for our kids, so that they're able to do something and create that skill, that they're able to contribute.
Yeah, because they're still young-minded.
Right. Yep. Anything else with this? We've got one more. And this, this one is interesting, because there was a bill that was shot down at the General Assembly, which was to add, I think it was a 1%, or allow localities to add a 1% towards capital projects that can go through the voting process at the locality, and that was, that was shot down, which would add additional dollars for a locality to add on dollars for their capital projects. Because again, we're not the only one that's accessing dollars for capital projects. There's a lot that a county has to oversee. But this is one that I would definitely want as more of a conversation with them, because I'm curious as to how they're handling this as a Commonwealth, because we're not the only ones experiencing this. I have talked with other localities, I've talked to other superintendents, you see it in the news in regards to buildings falling apart, and buildings not being up to speed, and having antiquated educational settings such as Apple Pie Ridge in Basshewer that have that open classroom concept, which was built in the 70s. It's not safe, and I don't, we do not like that, that concept, but it costs money. We also have the growth that we're dealing with. And the growth is, we need to continue to build schools or expand, whatever that is, and that costs money. So what, what is the recommendation? And to Mr. Atkins's point, is the money has to come from somewhere. This can't just be a created revenue stream, where if it doesn't come from locality, then it comes from the state, and then indirectly, it's going to come from us anyways. I get Mr. Atkins's point. But I'm curious as to, as a Commonwealth, how they're addressing this. Because we are growing in certain aspects of this, of this state, and our buildings. Like, this isn't just adding new buildings, it's taking care of our current assets. And as we see with the dollars that we are not receiving from the locality, understandably, we're happy with the money they give us, but understandably, they can't give us $18 million a year to chisel away at our CIP projects, because that's, that's a lot of money. So I'm curious as to see what ideas they have, or what things that we can take into consideration. I know the board of supervisors will also probably have some suggestions and ideas, because we did talk about it at the joint meeting. We do have Mr. Goodwin here as well. I'm sure he can answer any questions that we have about what that looks like. But I do want to open that, that conversation up here as well, because it, it's a problem, and it's not just a problem here in Frederick County.
So I think, when the, whenever we talk to the board of supervisors, and we always get the, well, we can't do this, because the properties were set for this back in, you know, the mid-eagle times or whatever, and now they're just now building or whatever. If we could get it set for proppers to be adjusted, at least for the time of building, instead of, you know, buying in 10 years in the past, and then coming out in the future and building, you know, 10 years when our needs have changed. To have that written in there somehow would go a long way. Now, that's not going to take care of maintaining the schools, because there's those one-time proffer dollars. I think, and, and that's their priority and prerogative on how to obtain that, but I think that would go a long way, and relieving not only the strain on the schools and, you know, the overcrowdings and populations, but also with our law enforcement, fire departments, roads, whatever, that we do give proffer dollars for. I think putting that out there would go a long way to help out, or somehow adjusting it, and having builders pay more share into that, I think, you know, would help, help us out tremendously. As far as maintaining our, our schools and our buildings, I think Mr. Davis is doing a great job. You know, but it does cost money, you know? New parts, new pieces, updating things to meet our students' needs. Where we get that money from, I don't know, but I would like it, I would like something set in there, not based upon a student ratio, but a building ratio.
So you mean like the number of buildings in a locality? Is that what you mean?
The number of buildings, I said the ages.
Ages, we, yeah, the ages of the building as well? Yeah.
Yeah, ages would, would help in that.
Yeah, we can provide that.
I think putting that in there, so that they have some kind of data to go off of, you know, because a 30-year-old school building is going to take more maintenance and TLC than a five-year-old school building.
Yeah. And it, and it's hard to believe, I know for me, that 1994 is 30 years ago. Right? So, I know, I know. So when you hear about, oh, it was built in 94, you're like, ah, that was just yesterday. No, that was 30 years ago. So, we have schools that were built earlier than that, but I think that's a piece that we're going to have to do a better job of assessing, because those buildings are getting to their peak age and start to renovate. I mean, we, we did it at a couple of our, of our newer schools that aren't new anymore, you know, so.
They're, they're reaching peak age, but I think in the future, we have to look at building schools and facilities, period, in a more substantial way to last longer.
And then also to take some of the burden off of local, local tax dollars, as far as providing electricity, heat, you know, cooling or whatever. If the state would provide funds for maybe energy-efficient windows, energy-efficient HVACs, things like that, to help, or at least help optimize those costs, would go a long way as well.
Yeah. Mr. Goodwin, you want to share that? So we have performance contracting, it talks exactly like you're speaking of.
And you're probably familiar with that, Mr. Atkins, but we have a number of folks who've come through to talk to us about performance contracts, which are about energy efficiency, which pay for themselves over time.
Exactly.
So Facility Services is engaged with a group right now, just to explore possibilities at one, two, or three buildings, start small, listen to a plan, but I get a lot of contacts. In fact, you put me in touch with someone-
That's all we're getting.
Right, that recently. So we talked a little bit, I talked with him again recently. So we are exploring those options, but it would be nice if it was led at a larger or state level.
Can I, can I add another layer? Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. So just to fully inform the board, so what that performance contracting is, is when you go on and take a look at your energy savings, that energy savings could then go directly back into capital projects. And they have dollar figures that they project about how much savings they can provide you, and then say, these are some projects that you can go ahead and work on through those types of savings. So exactly like you're saying, Mr. Atkins, then that's less money that we're asking from the locality, because it's taken out of the savings that we, we've had in our buildings and, and those projects, so.
And they are managed from a contract standpoint, but they work with local contractors, actually get the work done. You could even tell them the ones you'd like to work with, keep it local.
Yeah, good point. We're working on that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other aspects of this?
I've got, I've got a couple, or at least one I'd like to add.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so this was the last one. So, yeah, so if you guys want to, let me know what other ones you want to consider, and then we'll go from there.
I know that, as far as localities go, and the safety of our school, SROs are costly. It's, you know, costly to have an SRO in our schools. I would like to see the state provide SROs, that way the locality doesn't have to take on that burden. Not only do they do their daily jobs here at the schools, but they're also attending meetings like this, when they could be off with their families or whatever. It's also, the trainings and stuff that they go on is far beyond what, I hate to say it like this, but your regular law enforcement folks go through. And just face it, it does take a certain type of person to be an SRO. So actually, given that incentive, you know, as far as pay goes, or the state picking that up, would go a long way to help, I believe.
Great. We'll, we'll look into that, and I, I don't want to put you guys on the spot, but I think there's grant dollars we receive for that as well.
We, I know, we do-
I just don't know how much that is.
We do receive grants, but doesn't fund all the positions, am I correct, when I say that?
SROs?
Yeah. Right, and as a local, it picks up a lot of that.
Got it. Yep, we can add that on, Mr. Atkins, absolutely.
Something?
Yeah.
There are very few things that I think you get universal agreement on, but when we do sit down with our, with our, with our elected partners, it's very difficult to stand up on the floor of the House of Delegates or the State Senate and say, I don't support safe schools.
Right.
And in terms, in terms of asks, there are very few things we can all agree on wholeheartedly, but having SROs in schools is a universal positive.
Yeah. We're one of the few localities in the state that actually provide SROs at elementary.
So we, we are actually one of, by the way, we have amazing SROs. They do a great job of not only their day-to-day operations, but working with our students and providing a lot of support in regards to that aspect. But we actually are one of very few, very few counties that actually have support at the elementary level, but actually have one in, in almost every building as well. And I know a lot of our localities are jealous about that, but they, they do provide a level of safety that we need in this, in this county. So I agree, and we could definitely add that.
It'd be one less thing that we had to ask the, the local board of supervisors for.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Now, I know Senate Bill 283 is in committee right now to be determined in November. I didn't know if there was anything that we could certainly advocate for in respect to providing those dollars for the lunches and breakfasts for students, if this is the right venue for that.
Sure.
Or if, you know, since it's being debated and discussed, maybe to encourage them to advocate for it on behalf of, they aren't currently involved in that particular committee.
So I don't think it's currently being, being discussed or voted. It's already been voted on, and it went to Governor Youngkin, and he then made the prescription of a work group to come together to evaluate-
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
And then they have their findings, let them present on November 5th.
Right.
And then to move forward from there, depending on what those findings are. I, since it unanimously passed both sides of the House, I feel like, I have a good feeling that they will also recommend that that will be a good thing. But I don't want to take away our, our negotiating power, if you will, by adding that on and putting these, I don't, I don't want to spread us too thin, because I think that will go in the direction that I think you want it to go.
Oh, I think so too.
I just think that we probably should invest more of our capital on these, on these items, as opposed to adding another, because we're up to, let's see, five and then six for our SROs, that's, that's a lot.
Well, if I can add to that as well, as, as Mrs. Klein is saying, that, that's already been through, and they, both of the sides of the House have approved it.
And that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. So I, I, yeah, I, I think, I don't think it's appropriate to bring it up again, since they've already both voted on it, because then they're going to say, well, that's already been through, why are you asking us to bring it again?
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know if they had any leverage or-
I mean, if anything, it would be a way for them to show of why we support it, but they already supported it, so why, why would we bring it up again?
Sure, no, I got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any others? So what I'm going to plan on doing from here is, I'm currently working on the presentation for the legislative summit. We're working on that date, we'll get that to you. I will share that presentation with you, to make sure it encompasses the spirit of what you would like to see in there. And of course, if there's additional things that you would like to see or in passing you want to add, just let me know, just as long as it's before, three days before October 2nd, when we post this, then you, we can add and adjust as we see fit. So I appreciate the feedback from everybody, we'll add the, the SRO on there, and we'll continue the, these conversations. So thank you, Mr. Chair and School Board, for the, the conversation. I'm looking forward to this summit, it's going to be great. All right. And then, Mr. Chair, is the review of Policy 119P.
And, Mr. Chair, I move that the board table the policy, the review of the Policy 119P in light of information shared during closed session.
Second. It's been motioned to table, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion?
Global.
Roll call.
Dr. Ursin?
Aye.
Mr. Pionis?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Nay.[1754.33]